To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're a little late again tonight. Did everyone have a chance to go over the minutes from the last meeting? Any questions, corrections?
Well, I just have a question for Shada. In ordinance and resolutions.
Okay. In the minutes?
In the minutes.
Okay.
Our first vote was 6-0. And then, I think we did have people leave. And the next vote is 4-0 in favor.
Correct.
Do we need to, and Andy, do we need to mention in the minutes where somebody left?
It's up here at the top. I put people's time in. Because one, you voted on one. I mean, I can change and document that, but that's why I put.
So the 6:10 and the 6:20 are the times they left?
No, they came. So Ruth came in at 6:10, and Todd was here at 6:20. And then they left, and both were gone, and both were here for the ordinance, the salary ordinance, because that was the critical piece. And then neither were here for the resolution. Because you guys skipped the ordinance, waiting on Todd to get here, and came back to it. But I mean, I can modify it if you prefer. And Josh, you two.
They meet your standards, and that's fine. I just. Maybe somebody could look at that.
Yeah, that's up to the council. It doesn't say anything that's true.
Here's the note.
But if you think it'd be better to clarify in that second paragraph under ordinances, which two council pages were voting, that would be accurate as well. I don't think it's deficient if you left it the way it is, but if you want to make it more informative, that'd be a good point.
What do you want to do? So then, let me ask this, moving forward, Marty. Would you prefer that I document that more detailed, that that happens again?
I don't have a preference on whether, I just. A year or two years from now, if somebody looks back and.
Why was it a 4-0 and a 6-0? Well, and that's why I usually try to put the time in.
Just seems a little cleaner.
Yeah. I mean, I could certainly do that and add a note somewhere besides just at the top where their time in is.
Yeah, it's fine.
And I apologize. Marty, you move to approve this section.
4-0.
Thank you. To clarify that. See, this is what happens. I write them absent, and then they come in. You are an exception, because we need to.
All right, and Board of Public Works and Safety was for information only. Any questions, comment on that? Okay. We did have added to Communications Area Plan BZA Shada saying that David would like to re-up for five years. Now, David Rose's term is up, December 31st, and he does not want to continue, so we have an open spot. That is our appointee, so we need to, I think by the next meeting, come up with an appointee for the next year.
Is it a one-year term?
Three, is it three or four?
Four.
Four. And.
BZA and Plan Commission.
Would you guys, Wyatt, you want to turn the lights on back, or y'all want to stay in the dark?
As the President of Plan Commission, I also like to point out that the way the rules are, if you don't find a replacement, they stay on until you do. So just keep that in mind.
Second every meeting?
He knew we had to kind of be justified here. Okay, so. Let's try and have some candidates for the next meeting. Down to old business, the ARPA plan. We have, we can't spend any of that money until we have a plan in place. We have set December 31st as our kind of plan, is the council to come up with a plan. I don't think we've been fully staffed at a council meeting for the last several meetings, have we? And only a few of us have filled out the survey, so unless you guys object, I'd like to push it to next month, and then we'll try and get everyone to get that survey filled out. And then, once we get, we get the plan, we'll contact with Baker Tilly to write our proposal together, put the plan together, and then we can start dispersing those funds. Any objections? All right, new business. Mr. Wilson. Jay Wilson, here.
Is not here. I don't see him. Okay. That is, the Rochester Church of God had, it was in your packet, had submitted a mural request. They want to put a mural on either the north or south side of their, I think it's their gymnasium or their activity center, here on Main Street, right beside. Just speak quickly. Yep. Car repair shop. And because it actually is in our historical corridor, and it is visible from Main Street, the consensus, when I contacted Indiana Landmarks, of course, they pretty much are kind of trying to stay neutral on it, but their opinion is that it is not, they're not in favor of murals, especially in a historic corridor. Now, OKRA, which is funding agencies for different organizations, our Main Street program, stuff like that, the revitalization we just did, MSRP, they have a different opinion, basically the same as Indiana Landmarks. If you're going to do murals, keep it off of the main, do it in your alleys or do it on back streets. So this one, because the building is pretty much right there, and it's visible on all sides, I don't know what your opinion would be on allowing it. The other concern that could possibly be raised is, although it is owned by a church, if they were to move forward with one of these murals that is a depiction of Christ, if that would, here we go again with this whole freedom of speech.
I'm not concerned about that issue, but. I don't know if anyone else is. I think enough is enough on that.
What's in that building now?
It's the Church of God's, I think it's their activity center. Yep, that's the one.
It's the one on the east side, right?
Yeah, it's the one where the repair shop is. It's that building just to the north. It's kind of got the yellow brick on the front, and the sides are white.
McCords?
McCords, thank you, yes. Next to McCords.
Right next to McCords?
Yeah.
They're saying north or south?
Yes, yes, between 4th and 5th, on the east side of the road. I'm sorry, Brian.
They're saying north or south?
Yeah, the north or south side of the building.
Both visible from Main?
Because originally, they wanted the south side, and then when Mr. Wilson came back in, he said, "Well, we could put it on the north." And I said, "The problem is, is either side of that building, north or south, is visible from Main Street." And again, while I think their images or what they've chosen is pretty compared to a plain white wall, I just, again, we have a historical corridor we have to be conscious of when we do these things. Or you guys allow a variance for it. And I know we've got some murals started in alleyways, and one of them is visible, two of them are visible from Main Street, and that has been raised as a concern, but it got done before we got a hold of it, so they're there.
I may say something?
Yes. Yes, please.
The one concern I would have, you know, I'm not opposed to the mural as much as putting paint on brick, you know, so the long-term consequence of painting brick is potentially damaging. So that, they could, a potential option would be to put a board up there and then paint the board, attach it to the brick. And then if, you know, 20 years from now, they no longer own that building, and it's in disrepair, they could either take the board down, and you haven't damaged the brick.
Is it actually brick or cinder block on that?
I don't know.
I'm thinking.
From that front view, it's brick, but I don't know what the side looks like.
So I'm thinking the side is cinder block, because it looks, if I remember correctly, it looks bigger.
It is the cinder block.
It is cinder, that's what I was thinking, it's cinder. And I don't know if that makes paint adhere differently, whether it's brick or cinder block. I don't know enough about that.
We did get an opinion letter one time from Stark Landmarks, I shared with the council, probably when we were discussing another mural project. You know, their concerns is that there's some plan in place, that what's going to happen when this mural is no longer in good condition? You know, if they own the building, it's a much easier decision, but once it starts, if somebody else is putting this up, are they going to be responsible for upgrading it or whatever? So we do support murals downtown, but it's just to be aware that everybody needs to be aware of what the potential future costs can be. I mean, the situation they have in Akron right now is quite a mess with that historic painting that's next to Good to Go, where, you know, the brick has fallen apart. And building owner, building has changed hands.
Do we want to do anything without him being here to present what he wanted to present? Do we want to make a decision tonight without at least?
Yeah, I'm kind of not surprised he's not here. When he came in, he really, I, he was okay with whatever decision the council went with, so I wasn't 100% certain that he would be here tonight, although I reminded him, you know, when the meeting was. But that's up to you guys, if you want to, if one of you wants to reach out or have me reach out to him to see. But I think that he would be, he's okay with the decision if you feel comfortable in making one. They were just trying to make it look better. I think it's white right now.
What do you want to do, Mr. Wilson?
Okay, reaching out to him, getting some more info.
And with the four options presented, were they asking not just for permission, but also the council to decide which option, or?
No, those were just the ideas. I don't know that those were the final.
So they're not set on one, so it could be something totally different.
Right, it's just, that's the, I think that, what I gathered was, their consensus was is they wanted something more with the, you know, the kind of the skyline type thing.
That's the one I liked the best.
Yeah.
I would think before we come to this, they should have their plan.
Which, and I.
Know which one it is, so, because we don't want to just write a blank check if we choose that.
I tried to, I tried to explain that.
All right, well, I volunteer, Marty, to reach out to him and get some more info.
I have his phone number in my office, Marty.
I've been on these trains before.
I can give him a call, so let's move that to next month.
Okay, so who's going to reach out?
I'll reach out to him.
Brian, I would recommend the city take no position on the content or aesthetics.
No, 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 we just want them to.
Right.
Identify what they want.
Exactly.
Okay.
Just for clarification.
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Wyatt here?
Right here.
Okay, we are down to you on the agenda.
Okay. Thank you for letting me come before you this evening, Harry Wyatt. I own the building at 716 Main Street, which was just south of the Old Bailey Hardware, which is Karen Brown's beauty salon. I purchased that a couple of years ago, and I've redone the inside, finished it just this last year. Total Body Works is in there right now, and they've been there for about a year. Well, I'm looking to, I was looking to finish the facade and the front of the building. I didn't know until about three weeks ago that it had an ordinance on metal. And I had come up with a plan, and to have that done, actually a couple of weeks ago, until I found out, anyway, that's why I'm here in front of you now. I met with Harry and Plan Commission, and showed them the artist rendition of what I have. I believe they approve of it, and I wanted to show you what I've got going. I've got some drawings here, if you'd like to see them. Bring them. I've looked at this building from across the street way more than once, I'm just not throwing something at it. I sort of have an artist eye view, and I thought what I have in mind would enhance that corner right there, as well as this building's around it. I brought some samples of the metal, of what I'd like to use. I have a professional that's going to do it for me, he's done it before, it's worked for me before. And I'll show you what I've got going here. And I'm trying to use like a flat, not shiny stuff, except for the copper. The flat is the flat black here for the awning. This is for the vertical, right here. As you see in the, in there, the brown, and this will be all enhanced or wrapped with the copper. And over a period of time, this will patina nicely, it'll get a nice sort of, sort of looking finish to it over time. So this is my thought on it, and like I say, I haven't gone into it half-heartedly, I've thought about it for a long time. I'm real proud of that little building, I'd like to see it nice.
How many, how far out is the mancere part going to be?
Oh, this here?
Yeah, the black.
I think it's only.
It's going to be the existing.
Yeah, it's going to be the existing.
Yeah, it's all, yeah, it's all there, it's all existing. It's only 24 feet wide, the whole thing. It's not really that old at all.
Yeah, it's probably two, three feet from the building. It doesn't come way out. The historic guidelines say that, you know, they could put up cloth awnings or repair metal awnings, it doesn't say metal awnings are prohibited. The only place it kind of calls into question is metal on vertical faces. And this building is a lower-profile building, it's, you know, only one story, and the metal portion above the awning is only going to be.
A couple of feet.
Couple of feet, and it currently has like wood, old wood siding on there, so he's going to remove that siding and put the metal there over top of the brick.
It looks like a significant upgrade of what's there.
Yeah, that cedar.
Oh, yeah. That cedar-shaped thing is just not good.
We reviewed that through the design committee, and they don't have any objection.
Thank you. It's a pleasure, the council. Here's okay. Showing the variance.
There you be.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the plan.
Oh, so I would move to approve. The proposed change.
Say a second.
Substructure of the awning. Wood frame or metal? Wood frame, with just wood shingles on it. So there goes, he's not going to review the frame, he's going to leave the frame there and just take the shingles off and put this metal.
Thank you.
Community Resource Center.
That would be Marty.
You want me to start that one off?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Came up in Council on Aging's meeting, and I had spoken to the mayor about this a few weeks ago, and we have a couple representatives of folks from the center, but they came to the council board with the idea of, because of Terry Moore's involvement and dedication and years of service to not just Council on Aging, but the other entities in that building and people in the community, and just like to recognize that effort a little bit by naming a room at the center. And because it's a city-owned property, I talked to the mayor, felt like it was a matter that should be discussed and have the entire council made aware of, because we're technically naming not a building, but a room in a building. And so I think the idea is the main cafeteria activity room, just to be named the Terry Moore Cafeteria Activity Room, or whatever they want to name that, and putting some signage at the building, so that anybody that goes in there will recognize it. It's just an honor of Terry. Those that go way back, as I do, and was working with Terry back when the old high school was there, and her little office was down in the basement, and the main thing she was worried about on a rainy day was making sure the buckets were placed in the right places to catch the drips coming down. That's where she started and led that organization and those entities in that building up to the day she died. And so that's, we would be setting a bit of a precedent, because we don't have city facilities named after people. Again, this is not the building, it is just a room in the building, and folks in it, and the building on a daily basis would recognize the room as such. If there was a community function, you would say it would be in the Terry Moore room. So anything you would like to add to that at all, either one of you?
I think that's, that's pretty clear, Marty. Appreciate that very much. I'm the President of United Ministries, and so worked with Terry for a while, and she was very involved with making sure that that was an active part of the Rochester community, and so we want to pay tribute to her in some way that will last for a while. So, thank you, Marty, very well put, appreciate it.
Well, it certainly wouldn't be the program it is today without her involvement in the past, so.
So do we need a motion?
So we would, I guess I would. Make a motion that we would allow the folks in the community center to pick the room that they would like to name and how they want to do that, and I would like to move that we allow that in the community center.
Second, if all is in favor.
David, we'll keep in touch and keep talking about that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, moving down to our ordinances, we got two. Because there are only four of us, we can only do the first two readings, we cannot do all three. So we can do the first two readings and then move those to the next meeting. I'll entertain a motion for the first reading of ordinance number 14-2021, by title only.
Shall move.
Say a second.
Second, all in favor? Okay, ordinance number 14-2021, and ordinance amending the holidays for 2021.
Do you need a next question?
Would you like to give one?
Make it a lot quicker than you trying to read through it.
Fine.
Ultimately, last year with COVID, we, the mayor had, we normally would do a holiday dinner for the employees and gift card. Well, with COVID, we changed that, we added a holiday to it, it seemed to be a really, it was very well received, so rather than spending the money on the food and a gift card, we will do them, yeah. So the mayor decided this year again, with COVID still kind of lingering, that it might be a good option to do that again, so that's what that's for.
And what day we?
The gay.
It's Monday, December 20, I had put Wednesday, but I fixed it, yes, mine is correct.
What day, what day?
Monday, December 27.
The next meeting's the 28th. We didn't even have a council meeting then, because we would otherwise meet 28.
Oh, yeah. Can it be retroacted? Since we've introduced it.
You wouldn't have paid out for it yet?
No, yeah, we wouldn't, yeah, we won't pay out for it until, well, that would be the pay week, that week.
But we'll make you for it, payroll, right?
Would it have to be an ordinance, or just Board of Works approving the change?
No, it's in the, it has to be salary, because it's a holiday, so it would need to be a salary ordinance, because it's a paid holiday.
So that's the Christmas gift?
Uh huh.
I think it's approved. They're going to pay you each. It's approved one for one, like your paycheck. All that's going to happen on the 2nd day, if they lost the payment, it's going to be two weeks. But she doesn't need to cancel it. She doesn't need to cancel it, she just needs to tell it to the board and show up.
Okay.
So we meet on the 28th. Part of the reason where many of the ordinance is out, that part hasn't happened because you haven't had a payment.
Yeah, because it'll be payroll.
So then I think, I think you're fine.
Okay.
You're going to take over if they don't pass it.
Certainly leave everybody shut off for the meeting.
Already?
That's right, if we all have one for a meeting, but.
Yeah, let's see here, let me make sure I'm correct on the pay, because we've got Board of Works meets on the 2nd, the 16th, and the 30th to approve the pay, well, no, because the 27th will actually be in the very next pay, so it'll all come out in January, the first pay in January.
Correct.
That's all right, so we're good.
All right, I'll entertain a motion for the second reading, ordinance number 14-2021.
Shall move. By title only.
Moving second, and all those in favor? All right, ordinance number 14-2021, and ordinance amending holidays for 2021. Going a little further. Okay, we have another ordinance, 15-2021, entertain a motion for the first reading, ordinance 15-2021.
Shall move.
Maybe we'd like the audience to know if they want to hear this, read the whole thing, or do you want to do title only?
95 pages?
Yeah.
Okay, we took some of it out for you guys. There was a whole nother section that we decided didn't need to be part of the ordinance, because it was just reference, right? You're lucky, you're welcome.
It's only 93 pages.
When you say the entire of the reading, then?
Did you second that?
Yes.
All right, moving second, all in favor? If you can hear it by title only. Ordinance number 15-2021, and ordinance amending sewer use regulations. All right, entertain a motion for the second reading, ordinance number 15-2021.
Shall move.
By title only?
Second, by title only.
All right, moving second, if all is in favor? Ordinance number 15-2021, and ordinance amending sewer use regulations. Move those to the next meeting. All right, we're down to department reports. Chief Butler?
Sure, my report by title only, month of October 2021. For the month of October, structure fires, one in the city, one in Rochester Township, trash fires, one in the city, vehicle fires, two in Rochester Township, auto fire alarms, three in the city, one in the. Auto fire alarms, three in the city, one in Rochester Township, one in Richland Township. Crash brush fires, one in Rochester Township. Downed power lines, one in the city. Accidents, three in the city, one in Rochester Township. Medical assists, 17 in the city, seven in Rochester Township, two in Richland Township. Lift assists, two in the city. CO checks, three in the city. Gas leaks, three in the city, three in Rochester Township. Elevator rescue, one in the city. Cancelled calls, six in the city, two in Rochester Township, one in Liberty Township, for a total of 66 calls and we conducted one drill. Pending your questions, that concludes my report.
Any questions? Thank you.
For the month of October, we had 25 accidents, we issued 28 warnings, 46 offenses, there were 36 case reports, 507 calls for service, 32 lockouts, nine towed vehicles, and eight people incarcerated. And then you have the crimes those people were allowed for, for the month. Other than that, our newest hire, our newest conditional offer was made to Bryce Michael, who went to Public Safety Medical today for testing and evaluation and we'll get the results back within 10 to 12 days and then have to submit that to perf, assuming he passes everything. So we're looking after the first of the year before he actually starts. Other than that, that's about it, unless you have questions.
Any questions for you?
Is there an easy short answer, the difference between aggravated battery and just plain battery? Seems you'd have to.
Easy short answer now.
No?
Not an easy short answer.
Okay, I don't see Randy. Dwayne, you got a report for us?
Yes, leaves, leaves, leaves. We just finished, we have four machines out right now, we just finished up on the east side of the lake today and we'll start back in, on the west side of town tomorrow. And we worked the last two Saturdays and some overtime during the week. Of course, the leaves came down late this year and so we're trying to get that, now the majority of them are down, we're trying to get them cleaned up before snowfall. So we also started today installing the brackets for the Christmas ornaments or poles and they'll finish that up tomorrow and we'll have everything ready to assist the fire department in putting those up on Sunday. And that's all I have, pending any questions.
Any questions? All right, Marcus is not here. Derek on vacation again?
Presley.
Of course. Harry, you anything for downtown partnership?
Just brief. Chamber event is actually happening this weekend, it's Small Business Saturday and it continues all week. They have a bingo card where people can visit five, five in a row or five or whatever businesses and register for gift cards and if they fill the whole thing, then they can win a chance at 250 bucks. Should be a nice little promotion in its businesses all throughout Fulton County. And then the holiday stroll is slated for December 3rd. This is the evening event, very popular, Santa comes to town. There'll be a, the event that goes from 6:00 to 8:00 PM on Friday night and there'll be hot chocolate and all kinds of little things around town, there'll be ice, hopefully some ice carving and reindeer. Hopefully good weather.
Snow, can we hope for snow for some?
Watch your mouth.
Before or after, but not during?
David is not here.
I felt that from you two.
Ruth is not here. Okay. Fedco did meet last Friday. News out of there, Derek let us know that the city records regarding Blackater were incorrect and instead of a six inch water line, it's a 10 inch water line. So that means the bid, they had to continue that as incorrect and looking to get it upgraded. The 10 inch PVC was actually more expensive than ductile iron. So they're going with ductile iron to the property that Mitch is getting into, Bush Grove Landscaping. We'll go to that property and then kind of wait for some costs to come down because it's, it's quite a, it's an increase to keep going. Tiffany told us about a grant that T-Mobile is rolling out, it's a T-Mobile Hometown Grant. It's up to $50,000 a quarter and they're, they're basically targeting, as they put it, places where people connect, like pavilions, little, you know, small parks, something that we'll be, we'll be looking at. Fedco is also taking bids from consulting firms to kind of help us along in doing a little restructuring and, you know, kind of adopting some best practices, so. That's all I have, any questions? All right. Redevelopment Commission, Jason out here, all right, we're down to you, Mark. Easy.
Down to, down to me?
That's Randy.
Uh, well, yes, we had, VZA met last week, had two items on the agenda, it was a little bit different. Actually, one was denied as it was presented. I, I understand it that there's a negotiation happening between the neighbors and the property line might change, which would change the variances needed, so they denied the variance that was requested because the change of property line has not been approved, so. They, they have been busy this year, I don't think, there's been a month without a meeting this year?
I don't think so.
I don't think, yeah. Activity has been way up, so. And then Council on Aging met yesterday, we had a brief meeting. The R SVP announcing that they're putting plans together for an Orlando trip, February or March next year. Don't know exactly what all that's going to be or what it's going to cost at this point. And then they are encouraging anybody over 55 would like to join R SVP, especially if they do volunteer work in the community. There's no cost to being a member of R SVP, you do have to go to the center and register, show your driver's license, but they're going to be working on trying to get more people registered as R SVP members. From Council on Aging, we are going to host a community health fair at Woodlawn Hospital on December 1st. It is free to everybody and you don't have to be a senior citizen to be welcomed there. I don't know much more detail than that about what will be offered at the fair, but it is open to the community, to anybody. Doing some computer work with the Council on Aging and, and improving the backup system and processes, so. Other than that, the rides are still going up and still averaging 90-plus rides a day with transpo and colder weather, that's expected to go up even more again, so. That was everything that we talked about. If there are questions, that's my report.
Any questions? Mr. Wilson?
Animal Adoption Center postponed their meeting until December, so I'll have a report for them next meeting. Solid Waste District did meet. Over the last two months, they have collected $26,491.75 by turning in recyclables for funding. In the month of August, the county landfill received 40,586.7 tons of waste. 14% of that was Fulton County, the rest was the state of Indiana. And we received $33,333 for that host fee. For September, there were 39,218 tons, 23, sorry, 17% of that was Fulton County and received that same amount for the district host fee. Other than that, we discussed similar things to what we talked about today, the holiday schedule and salary of the employees there. That was about it.
Any questions?
Mr. Fitzwater, Tree Board EMS. I know Marty's saying this. Tree Board met last week, they are getting all of the, the leaves contract for trees removal and trimming, getting all that finished up. There's going to be some places where even soil wasn't filled in or grass wasn't planted, but right now it's going to be a whole lot of grass growing they would put down, so they may have to wait to spray. The ever-present list of trees that could be coming down, we met with the city regarding sidewalk issues, mainly in the precinct one, precinct two, there's a lot of, I assume it's a lot of older maple trees are causing damage. So we're looking at some point getting those done and redoing the sidewalks. There's also ongoing work with planting new trees and there's a, I guess, a partnership with Duke Energy, they're going to help fund some money to get trees replanted for us. Now we had a gentleman from Duke who put up a meeting and seemed very positive in terms of helping get things done. That's all I have for you.
Questions? Marvin, you were asked here for the water board report. Can you give one? All right, no John Garrett, moving on. Andy, do you have any?
I do not.
Shout out to ADA concerns?
I do not.
Entertain a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Moving second, all's in favor? Thank you.
Brian was a waste of time on that one.